All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. It's 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. I'll call the meeting to order at this time and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags.
Here we bow. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for everything that you have given us as we participate in the community's business. May we do it with honor. May we do it with patience, understanding, and give us wisdom. In Christ's name, we ask all these things. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Drake, Martin, Harrison present today. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, you have the minutes from October 11th, 2022, regular session. Entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This time we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on the future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Is there anybody here today that wishes to speak? Okay. All right, Ernest, would you like to come forward?
Your Honor, my name's Ernest LaGroon. I live at 5575 Hillcrest Drive in Farmersville, Texas. And I'd like to speak on the maintenance of the road on which I live, on Hillcrest Drive. The roads around the location of my home is deplorable. And I realize that we have maintenance every once in a while on schedule. But this grader that come down, it lets the blade just bump, 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 bump. And it have already caused a crack in the windshield of my vehicle. I have a 2014 Yukon. And the dashboard is just split and it just shakes like I don't know where going down. The dust on the road is deplorable as I moved down here last October. And I've never had to experience the dust and the bumping on any road in Arkansas from which I moved. And the kids, I see them playing out there in that dust. You can go down there just 10 miles an hour and it's just dust all everywhere. And I don't know what the time limit is on for them to come out of their house and get on the bus when the bus arrive. But I realize I've been told that it is a delay whenever the bus stop that they can have up to so many minutes to board the bus because of the dust and stuff on it. And here just recently, they come down and they put tar pavement on the roads all around us. And on some roads, they have just four, five homes that they covered. And on the road on which I live, there's about 20 houses, about 47, 48 cars on this that lives on that road, that travel that road. And it's just a continuation of dust, dust, dust. And you know, when it has rained recently. And I would like to see something done by that, if you can, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Keith LaGrove?
My name is Keith LaGroon. That's my dad was speaking there. Basically, we're going to cover basically kind of the same thing.
Okay.
There. He just came with me today and go out and eat breakfast before I go into work today. But the complaint, basically, I've been complaining about 15 years off and on about the same road, 2750 County Road there. It's Hillcrest Drive there. And the road actually behind us also, basically, I've been complaining about there. It used to be a paved road on the backside there. So I went from Commission, I guess, two into Commission one. And it kind of went back and forth there over 15 years. I've been living there, but I felt like it was kind of a slap in the face this go around that what happened out there is still left Hillcrest in the road, County Road behind us, in just a dust bowl for that whole neighborhood there, which my dad was explaining there. It's basically about 47 cars that basically goes up and down that road that lives there. And it's about 27 residents that live on that road there. And when I basically circle and kind of just kind of look at the neighborhood, see how growth and how everything is going, you know, in the area there. And I'm like, you know, why this street here cannot get any payment whatsoever there? Everyone else is getting payment on the road there. This street have never had any payment whatsoever. You know, one time I was told it was a private road there. I come to find out that it actually is a county road that should be maintained. But when the grader come through, six days later, it's worse than it is before because we're not doing anything to put any more material on top there. We're just spreading rock there, which leave it loose. And when you actually travel down the road, you actually fishtail on your rear end because you bouncing so much right to left. There's no such thing, let me go to the left-hand side or the right-hand side. It's the same all the way through there. Then when you go to the backside of the property, it's the same thing, same way also. So during that travel time there, your vehicles, I mean, you cannot have a cup of water without it just shaking just like this right here. That's the way your vehicle is maintaining the whole time. So I'm actually a certified mechanic there. I do lower ball joints on my family cars on a regular because of that there. And so that's what I want to bring forth is anything can be done that can eliminate this here for better maintenance.
Are you south of 380 or north of 380?
I'm actually northeast of 380.
Up the Merritt?
I guess that'd be south, south. It'd be south of Merritt.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Being no old business, is there anybody online?
No.
Okay. We'll close the public testimony. And we have no old business today. New business consent calendar. Commissioners, you have the consent calendar in front of you. Entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action items, approval of accounts payable.
I make a motion, repay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers.
Make a motion to approve line item transfers.
Did we have any?
Second.
I don't think there's any.
I don't think we had any.
Just budget amendments. We're too new in the year.
Yes, sir. Budget amendments, okay.
Yes.
So we don't need to do transfers. Sorry about that. Approval of budget amendments.
Make a motion to approve budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll personnel.
Make a motion to approve payroll personnel.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, a quarterly report for the Audie Murphy Cotton Museum. Susan?
Good morning.
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 Thank you for letting me present our quarterly report today. During the past three months, visitors to the museum came from 36 different states. And internationally, we actually had some come from Australia, Ukraine, and England. And there was a total of 1,281 paid visitors to the museum and a total of 1,353 people actually signed our guest book. Our visitors spent 80 nights in local motels, which included Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, Best Western, Motel 6, Comfort Inn, Express Inn, Quality Inn, Super 8, and Hampton Inn. A few of our group tours, we had a group that came from the Chess Christian Homeschool and another from the New Christian Depot School downtown. Our lunch break special speakers this quarter in July, Ron Robinson did a program on the Battle of Gettysburg. In August, Robert Bostwick spoke about his experiences in the Special Forces. And we also have a exhibit up about him, fascinating talk, some of the things he's done. And in September, Marshall Smith talked about the history of drones. He's the, I have the drone museum over in Caddo. That's really cool. In July, the museum had its 14th Annual Summer Camp Program that's geared towards six to 10-year-olds. This year's theme was Camp Lone Star, and they made arts and crafts, played games, and sang songs relating to the early days of Texas history. In August, Dave Houston was Frank Sinatra as the entertainment at the 16th Annual Heritage Dinner and sounded just like him. We also had our Muntzi at the Museum event in September. For our movie nights, we showed The Good, The Bald, and the Elderly, starring Ernest Borgnine, Wrestlers of Devil's Canyon, starring Alan Lake, and Andy Hardy Comes Home, starring Mickey Rooney. We also installed a new temporary exhibit on songbooks that are actually from the museum's own collection that has never been put out. So that's pretty cool. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I want to say this. I enjoy y'all's little page that y'all do. I appreciate that. And I'm sorry, I think y'all had a banquet that I missed. Am I correct? And I wish I'd have been there, but I had other things. But we appreciate what you do.
You have to make next year's.
I will.
All right, thank you. Entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Quarterly report for the Kentucky Fire Association, Ryan couldn't be here today. Do y'all want to?
I spoke to him briefly yesterday. One of my concerns with it was the cattle mills responses. He did say that it was a staffing issue. They have been working on it. It will reflect next month that it's gotten a lot better. They also have some grants for some fire departments through the Texas Forest Service, some new engines and trucks that's been delivered. He's going to brief us next time on that as well. And as always, if we got questions, he said, call him.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Are you going to put it off and head and come up here? All right, entertainer motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number three, the Hunt County Delinquent Tax Collection Update by Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott, LLP. And Mr. LLP is here, I guess.
Yeah, Mr. LLP is here. Hi. My real name is Patrick MacArthur. I am with the Purdue Brandon Law Firm. And Judge Stovall, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be with you all this morning. And I'm going to provide an update on the collection of your delinquent property taxes. Couple of things that I'll go over. One is I just want to kind of give you an overview of our office. Number two, just a summary of the collections activity to date. And then three, I'm going to give you kind of some specific numbers around the collections. So we did provide paper packets that you should have in front of you. And if you could, just turn to the second page, we will get started. So our team, I'm showing you our team. And with us today is managing partner Doug Burnside. And the partner in our office, in the Tyler office, is Patrick Woods. And Mimi Thomas is showcased here. She's the lead for bankruptcy section for our office and kind of watching and monitoring all the bankruptcy activities that's going on in Hunt County, making sure you guys are covered there. We did hire a full-time staffer, Nicole Hunter, who's working in our Greenville office. And then we have, you know, several other staff behind the scenes working the various accounts, including Stacy Fleming, who has been with our office for more than 15 years, working on the Hunt County accounts before we were hired with some of our other taxing units. So she brings a lot of great institutional knowledge and is familiar with a lot of the accounts in Hunt County. If you could turn to the next page, just showing you our offices here. But I do want to point out that we opened our Greenville office. So that's where Nicole is working. And it's over here on 2410 Lee Street and a catty corner from the courthouse, across from Max Grill. And so we were happy to have that open up. So we have Nicole working there. She is, she brings a lot of great prior experience as a former police officer and working with juvenile corrections. She is in the Army Reserve and she has been called to duty and deployed. So she'll be out for a couple of months. And we're hiring an additional staffer. We're working through those applicants and hoping to have that person hired in that office very soon. So if I take it to the next page, I want to just briefly go over the kind of the tax collection timeline because it's a little counterintuitive, the way this works. There's a bit of a lag in the way that the collections work. So, you know, I'm going to share with you some numbers about your 2021 taxes. And here we are in October of 2022. Sometimes that can be a little confusing. So I just want to quickly go over this timeline and how this works for your 2021 taxes. You know, initially, it starts off in 2021 in January in the appraisal phase. You guys are familiar with this, where the appraisal district works through the accounts, comes up with the appraised value, sends the notices out. And then the equalization phase, the taxpayers get a chance to dispute their values and normalize everything. And then the role is then certified by the tax office. The tax bills go out in October of 2021, right? The taxpayers have until the end of January. And then February 1st, those tax bills, if they're not paid, they are considered delinquent. And at that point, there's penalty and interest that's attached to those accounts. But for the most part, you know, for the small percentage of the business personal accounts, those would be turned over to our office for, in April of 2022, right? And then the bulk of the accounts get turned over to our office in July. So we were hired in July for all intents and purposes of the 2021 taxes. All of those taxes didn't come to us, you know, until July. And that's when we started our collections with you guys. So I just want to kind of set the baseline there so you guys have a little better understanding of the timeline. If you could go to the next page, we'll provide an overview of our collections activity here. So we have hit the ground running, collecting your delinquent property taxes. So if you look here, we've made over 1,100 phone contacts, over 7,300 letters mailed, notice letters, trying to notify these folks of the property tax amount due. When those letters go out and come back as undeliverable, we do the skilled research to track folks down and find better addresses. So we've made a number of address updates, 347 there. Field inspections, those are where I have personally gone out and spoken with a number of your business personal accounts, speaking with these owners, explaining the situation, trying to get an understanding of what their plans are to pay the taxes that are due. And those are just one-on-one, you know, site visits, me going in and visiting with these folks and trying to work through these things. And, you know, again, I think that's an area where our Greenville office, having staffers here, that, you know, that's going to help with that as well.
You set appointments before you go out or do you just show up?
No, sir. I show up. And I feel like I can hit a lot more ground if I don't have to schedule appointments. So I just go, show up, and if they're not there, I follow up. I come back and find a better time. But again, just working through this, the bankruptcies, we're monitoring the bankruptcy court to, you know, make our personal appearances and, you know, and cover the tax liens as part of the bankruptcy process. There was 13 of those. We've made 32 court filings and 25 pay agreements, working with folks and setting up agreements to get, you know, down payments on taxes and monthly payments to pay these things off. So I want to, if you turn to the next page, I want to provide an example of a collection that we recently did and just, you know, just highlight some of the work we do. We've, we don't shy away, I guess, from the difficult accounts is the purpose behind this example. So this was a, it was a mobile home. It had 11 years of taxes due, and that was due to a deferral that was on the account. That deferral came off and, you know, at that point, the tax code gives them, the taxpayer, 180 days before it's turned over for, you know, to be subject to foreclosure action. And so, you know, all in, there was over $15,000 due in tax penalty interest due on this mobile home. And so it's a situation where, you know, an old mobile home, we knew we needed to proceed forward and take some action on it. But with that amount of taxes due, you know, there may not have been an interested buyer in, you know, buying something like that. So I went to the effort to research and find an interested buyer for this property. I don't want to take mobile homes to a tax sale, have them struck off to the county, and then all of a sudden, the county's responsible, right, for the mobile home. I want to avoid that situation. So I took the care to find an interested buyer and think this process through end to end. I found a person, worked with them, you know, filed the tax warrant, worked with Constable Valenzuela, who's here with us today, to execute the tax warrant. And we went out to the site, spoke with the owner. And sure enough, they paid in full. So I was surprised by that. I had a plan to carry it end to end, take it to a tax sale, do what we need to do. But at the end of the day, taxpayer paid. And it's a win for you guys. It was a success story. And just kind of want to share that with you guys. Again, we are working all the accounts and, you know, not shy about working some of the more difficult ones. So if I take it to the next page here, now I'm going to get into a little bit of the numbers. So here I'm showing you the 2021 taxes, some of the details around that. So if you can, you think about the timeline. By the time that it, the 2021 taxes were turned over to our firm, right, 95% of it is collected, right? It's the normal, everyday, you know, homeowners that set up the escrow accounts, those taxes get paid in the normal course of events. So 95% of the 2021 taxes were collected. And the amount that's turned over to our firm, right, if you look at the big picture, is the red sliver on the pie chart. It's the turnover amount. So that little 5% sliver is what I want to focus in on the next page. So here on this page, this is the turnover amount for your 2021 taxes. And the turnover amount was a little over $1.3 million. As of today, or as of the last collection report, is about 875,000 remaining, which calculates to a 34% of your delinquent property taxes that were turned over for us in 2021 have been collected, which, just as a reference point for your 2020 taxes, you know, those were collected a little around 57%. So we are on track, kind of ahead of schedule, to meet or exceed that collection percentage, where it's 60% of the percentage that was collected for your 2020. So if I could take you to the next page, you know, I don't know if you guys have ever seen your account breakdown. This shows your delinquent property tax breakdown through the 2021 taxes. On the left-hand side, it shows you the breakdown by kind of status of the accounts. And one thing I would highlight here is that, you know, a third, 32% of the accounts you have delinquent property taxes on are in deferral. So meaning, we cannot take action, we cannot foreclose the tax lien on those accounts. And then on the right side is an account breakdown by dollar range. And one thing I want to highlight here is that 80, it's about 87% of your properties for the base tax amount due is less than $1,000, right? So the cost of a lawsuit can be anywhere, you know, it can range between $750 to $1,000, between the court costs, the, you know, the sheriff, the, you know, the service fees, the research fees, things like that. So if we took these, if we filed lawsuits on these folks, we would essentially be doubling down on the amount of money that is due. So we take a very targeted approach to these folks. We try to call and we get our skilled research folks to, you know, if there's bad addresses, things like that, try to track down contact information. We really try to talk through the situation with these folks and work through it. But if we need to, you know, we will proceed forward. But I just want to kind of point that out. And then one more item I did want to mention that we do is we, in the course of business, we file for your excess proceeds. And I actually have a check here today. It's $3,000 check that is going to, after this meeting, I'm going to go to the county treasurer. This money goes into the coffers of the county. And I don't know if the previous law firm was doing this for you, but we are going to do this for you, where we take a property to a tax sale, right? And bidders come in and they pay more than the minimum amount. The delta between the minimum and whatever they pay is considered an excess proceed under the tax code. And that money sits in the registry of the court for two years. And if the owners don't come in and claim it, then the taxing units can come in and that money gets distributed out prorata to the taxing units. Our firm is, you know, going after this money. This is money that, you know, it's money that can be used by the counties and the various taxing units. It's unrestricted. It's not something we have a fee on or anything. We just think it's the right thing to do and it's what should be done. And so this is just something I just want you guys to be aware that we're doing and actively monitoring and collecting for you.
Great.
With that, I'm happy to just open it up to any questions you might have.
On these small accounts that you just last spoke about, under $1,000 due, can we get a deed from them instead of having to go through a foreclosure? If you can get to them, or is that allowed under tax collections?
Yes, Judge, we can, we can, we can in fact do our own title research without asking for the deed from them. We would, we could look for the deed and as part of our research to-
Instead of having to sue them and do a tax sale, can they just deed it over?
Oh, to deed it as a gift.
Yeah.
Deed in the foreclosure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's actually allowed under the law, but it's not something that we recommend because if you accept a deed in that fashion, you could actually be liable for any of the-
That's right.
For instance, environmental issues on it. So we wouldn't want to do that. Now, if we were to acquire it through struck-off property through a tax foreclosure, you're not liable to pass that act on that property. So that's, you could do it, but we wouldn't.
Right.
That's a good question.
Patrick, when it goes into deferral, how long does that, how long does a deferral typically last?
Well, a lot of the deferrals are, you're kind of over 65 deferrals, right? So until that account owner kind of passes on and that deferral comes off of the account, at that point, it, you know, there's 180 days before we can pursue it forward. And so an example, right, the mobile home that I was talking about, the deferral came off in December. And then at that point, we couldn't do anything on it until like June. But that exemption stays on the account as long as that taxpayer is eligible for the exemption.
Actually, as long as they are alive and living there. That's, no, this is true. Am I correct?
That's correct.
I mean, it's from now on. And that's one problem that we have. And I appreciate you looking into this because there are a lot of people deferring. I've looked at a list of them. It just blew my mind. But I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
What about the bad addresses? How long does it take? Does track goes down a long time or what do you do if you ultimately don't find them?
We don't give up, you know? We, we get those back and we look for them. And I don't have a specific average for you, but, you know, we have several skilled researchers in our office. And we just continue to look for those. I mean, especially if it's something that's, you know, over $1,000 and something we need to get after, we stay on it. So we have various tools, skip tracing and various subscription-type services that we subscribe to to help our skilled researchers locate these addresses.
You don't find them, do you have to give them service to sue them or can you?
We can, we can site by posting if our addresses we can't find. But, you know, again, we do our best to locate them. We'd love to get it paid without going to a suit.
Right, I understand. But clear them up. I mean, just get them off. How do we, ultimately, how do we get rid of them?
We have a methodology through site by posting.
Yeah.
The question that the judge asked, I thought was a very good question. The question that the judge asked, I thought was a very good question, and I understand that, but here's the thing about it, let's say that we do sue them, basically, that's added on to what they have to pay. The county is not having to pay it, so in some cases, would it be better to go on and sue, in reference to get them to show up, and then basically, we might be able to...
Yes, sir, yes. And that happens a lot, where we file suit, and that gets the taxpayers' attention, and they want to pay the taxes at that point. Sometimes, you know, they get the notice of the hearing, and it's like, it's getting real for them, and they have to go to a hearing, and that's when they pay. Sometimes, they wait until the day before the tax sale, and they want to pay, you know, the taxes. It's varying degrees, but we are, you know, we'll do what we have to do to get things paid.
Do you have a, do you have a specific number on how many over 65 individuals?
I could get a number for you. I don't have it on the top of my head. I mean, I've got your, the total number, the dollar amount here, but as far as the actual property numbers for your deferrals, I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Maybe next time, get it to us.
Do that, sure. I can email it to you.
That's fine. Either way.
Okay. Email works.
Hey, Daniel?
Yeah.
Have you had a chance to look at the problem we've got down at, I was...
Oh, yeah.
Hawk Cove, yeah, thank you. Are we going to be able to talk about that?
Yeah, exactly.
Right. Do we need them to stay and ask them if they had time to stay?
Yeah, if they have time, it shouldn't take very long.
Because we, I mean, I can cut the, we don't have much left in the agenda, and we could even skip a few and come back out if y'all had time.
Happy to stay and help where we can.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank you.
I just want to close with this. I've contacted each one of you guys, just to meet with you one-on-one. I want to know if you ever have any questions about particular counts, areas that you are concerned, I just want to have those lines of communications open, and so I'll continue to work with you guys and meet with you, and we, you know, we want to provide the best customer service we can, and I just look forward to working with all of you on this, on collecting the taxes.
Thank you for coming today, Patrick.
Thank you.
Entertained motion for approval of this report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to skip some of these, preliminary plat of Briar Branch Estates in Precinct One. Brian?
All right, guys, we've, and Briar Branch has been going for some time now. We had the paving plan that was approved a month or so ago. This is just the preliminary plat, so that they're, they're sure that the layout is satisfactory, so that they can get started on the heavy engineering, getting everything going. So this will be a multi-phase development, obviously, with it being that big, but this is the overall proposed layout that they have.
Have they already put up all their money for escrow for those surrounding roads?
They have.
Okay. Any discussion? Entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Brian, help me on this name, final plat of Bohomy, is that it?
Bohmy.
Bohmy?
Bohmy.
Bohmy Edition in Precinct One.
Pretty simple plat. They've got the road frontage they need, they're on state right-of-way. It's got an odd little dog leg, and that is because they didn't have the frontage they needed on an established fence line that they were holding, so they had to do some additional frontage. The, it didn't affect the remaining track negatively, so.
Entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is this next one, is this the one that's partially in, yeah, are we going to talk about that, Daniel, now, or we will...
We should probably wait till after the session.
Executive session, okay. Action number nine, the final plat of T and M Williams Edition, number one, in Precinct Three.
They're getting pretty simple, one lot plat. It's a, it's ultimately a family division. I believe the family member who's getting this is going to turn around and sell it. So, simple, large lot, one lot plat.
What wasn't, did you say this was with parts of their family, correct?
But the family member's going to sell it. They're not going to build on it.
That's right. That's right. And anytime, you know, the, families are exempt from plating on a family-to-family division, but at any point, if any of those lots cease to be owned by family, then they have to plat that lot. So that's according to the subdivision rules.
So their intention was to go ahead and sell it, so they need to go ahead and plat it, so when they deed it, they could, yeah, being proactive on it.
That's right.
Reference 30-foot, what were you recommending on that?
On what?
30-foot frontage. Arent it?
Well, they've got, I mean, they've got the right-of-way dedication, you and I spoke about the road. This is one that's, it's miles in on county roads, on rock roads. It's kind of in a, in a low area, and it's one that would actually probably be negatively affected by upgrading the road. And so, that's what we, that's what we spoke about, and there's no sense in having a 450-foot strip of oil sand when you've got miles of rock to get out.
I agree.
So.
All right, any questions? Entertained motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Anything else we need to talk about before we go to executive session?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion going to executive session under items one through four.
Make a motion, go into executive session?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we're in the executive session at 10:37.